The pledge.
All right, yeah, I'll tell you. I just want to make sure you were good for it before I said your name. We need to do it in front of everybody. Okay, all right, um, I'd like to, it's recording?
Yes.
I'd like to call to order the Weathersfield School Board meeting for February 11th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Um, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Nick Stilson.
allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, um, do we have any changes or additions to the agenda? Um, I noticed that I didn't get, um, we were gonna talk a little bit about, um, plans for the, uh, the, the four wins and for the, um, so you, so he can maybe just include that in what you're talking about, just sort of briefly what's happening with those.
Okay, and then we don't have a student presentation of learning tonight since we have a budget.
Okay.
And our data report too, and then our data report is actually not student presentation of learning. It's, well, it's, in a sense it is, but students aren't presenting, so our instructional coach and interventionist.
Okay.
In the end, we, um, I'm here for a question, Nick, but we had a community member reach out to joining the Nick Stilson's committee, so I'd like the board to do an appointment this person.
Sure. So we can include that too, okay. Nick Stilson's request and appointment.
If I can just ask a question about standardized testing and timing of it, I'm not sure where that would fit in. Would you like to do that?
Um.
I can add that into my report. Okay, thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. All right, um, we'll start with, um, the approval of the minutes from January 13th and January 15th. Anyone want to make a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve both.
Okay, Mark made a motion to approve both. Um, do we have any corrections or comments? Okay, they look good. Um, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Aye, aye, that's unanimous. That's the meeting one, it's from the 13th and 15th. Up next, we have, um, public participation. None? Okay, um, no student particip- no student presentation of learning? Nobody online either? Um, so I guess we will head right into the administrative report.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and just highlight a couple of the things that are happening, um, going on in school right now. So first thing that we did is last Friday, we had a professional development day where students got out at 12 o'clock. And then we were able to look at the, uh, first off, we did BT cap, procedures as far as for administering a BT cap to standardized tests, so all staff members went through that process. We also looked at our STAR data, um, and the teachers were able to go through the data, look at trends between grade level spans, K through 2, 3 through 5, 6 through 8, and then with those spans, then they were able to create their new weights for their classrooms. So they all did that. And then the last part of it was our safety training with our Weathersfield Police Department, so we had, um, crew members of our Weathersfield PD here, and they were able to go over what things could happen or what things we would do if unfortunately we ever had an active shooter or any kind of emergency on campus, and how we would go through those procedures. So it was very helpful, um, the staff was very much in tune, so it was about an hour and 15 minutes. Um, we never know exactly, you know, those situations like that are unpredictable, but it was very helpful to have what procedures are currently most, the best procedures for safety for all, so it was nice to have the PD, our police department, so thank you to Chief Gennons and his crew, his officers for being here. Um, we also have, um, going on this week, we have lunch with a loved one. So a couple of years ago, we did decide instead of just having one day to make it more accessible for all families, if they have a certain day that they need to be able to come, and they have Mondays off, so instead of having this scheduled day, they can pick their day that they get to come. Some of them take it on days off, some take it on based on the meal of being served. We threw a little bit of a curveball today because they had one thing, they had American chop suey plan for today, but because it was so cold, they did tomato soup and butter noodles. Um, so you, you never know for sure what you're gonna get, but everything is, um, homemade from our kitchen. So there's, are some families that are enjoying lunch with a loved one, so if you have that opportunity and haven't done it yet, we're serving lunch Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, stop on by and have lunch with a loved one or just whoever's here. Um, so that's been a great tradition. Our Weathersfield town plan, we did share that out with you, so, um, unless there was any things that anybody wanted to add, we are ready to submit that to the zoning board. So thank you BJ, SD for working on that and doing such a great job. We went through the final details and knocked that down, so I appreciate your hard work on that BJ, thank you. And then we did have the K5 family dance that our BTO puts on, um, they do it on Saturday, they did it on this past Saturday from 3 to 5 PM. It was a great turnout, we have about 100, 100 people or so here, which is amazing. Um, they did it this year in the AP room, um, because the smaller venue made it a little bit cozier and nicer, plus that way they get food and beverages in there because we don't want to include our beverages on the gym floor, since we have that new gym floor, um, but it was a great turnout and kids were talking about it on Monday and how much fun they had with the family dance, so we appreciate BTO doing that and being part of that for us. And now I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to my wonderful interventionist slash coaches, Christine Hughes and Kristen Huber, and they're gonna talk to you a little bit about our data dive, about STAR scores and our DIBELS, and let you know how our students did and how they're progressing from fall to winter. Um, yeah, just click on there and click on the data, I like the icons there. Uh oh. Sorry, I didn't give Christine access. Didn't plan that one out when you were doing it. Um, I think if Kristen or Christina can give access real quick, or Christine? Sure, do you guys want to share too? Kristen, do you want to share or do you want, do you just give access to Christine?
I think I just gave access to her.
I'm sorry, I didn't think about that one. Oh, rated secret data, so we want to make sure. Okay, it looks so cold in here.
Still loading. Okay, I think we're good.
All right, so if you want to go to the next slide. Um, when we came to present to you in the fall, we had told you that we had to revise our school-wide wig because we met the wig in the fall. So our new wig is that we are trying to get our math proficiency to be 55% and our, um, reading proficiency to be 64% by June. But first, we're gonna talk to you about DIBELS. DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. And that is the assessment that we have chosen as a supervisory union to use for the Act 139, um, in the state of Vermont, which is a literacy act. So if you want to go to the next slide, Christine. We gave DIBELS, the DIBELS assessment, to our kindergarteners only in the winter, we did not do it in the fall. So we don't have any, uh, growth to show you for our kindergarteners, but we will at the end of the year. You can look at this slide and just see our kindergarteners are doing pretty well. You can go to the next one. Our first graders in the fall, um, compared to now, you kind of see a little bit of a, uh, dip in our scores, and a lot of that is because the rigor of first grade gets harder in the winter. Um, we also have, um, just a lot of factors with snow days and things like that. We gave this right after we came back from break, but we fully expect to see those scores better in the spring. Second grade had a pretty, um, great growth, you can see the red shrunk a lot, and we're really impressed with our second grade and how our teachers are working with the kids to make sure that our, that they're all getting what they need. And our third graders are doing phenomenal. Um, the blue is the highest level in DIBELS, which is different than STAR, and STAR, the green is the highest, but for DIBELS, blue is the highest. So we have a lot of our third graders scoring in that above average, um, no risk category, which is really wonderful. That's our DIBELS. So now we're gonna talk about the reading, and I think we're gonna, our school-wide reading. So overall, in the fall, we were right about 60%, and now with our winter scores, um, we're just above 62%. So if you remember from the fall, only first kid in the first grade take the early literacy test, they do not take the reading test, and we do not give the early literacy. For our fall results, that's just, um, a representation of first grade with reading being our kindergarten and our first grade. So this is a snapshot of, um, second grade through eighth grade, uh, they take the reading test, and you can kind of see we've got some, some pretty significant growth in sixth and seventh grade. And I do just want to say that, um, we are working with Renaissance and we are also working with IT here in the SU. Our students who take algebra and Windsor, for whatever reason, their scores are being reported with Windsor data instead of Weathersfield data. So we are working on that, but our eighth grade scores on this slide are not valid and not indicative of our eighth graders. Um, and our algebra students typically score in the blue and the green, so those scores will be higher once we figure this out.
Because 25% of our students in, um, eighth grade are taking algebra.
All right, it's time for the math scores. All right, so, um, in the fall, we were right about 50-50%, and we've actually made some great growth to about 54%, which I think, um, is a really good job of the teachers working hard and the students working hard on, um, math. So it was really nice to see. All right, and then this is the breakdown, um, of the different classes. And we again have some different areas of some really great, um, growth. And then again, that eighth grade score definitely being our algebra students, um, would definitely be, um, different with that. And then, um, I can say, looking at some of this, um, we've had some teachers that were really great and looted out and started looking at the data right away, and I think with a couple of grades, we've noticed that it might be a curriculum pacing issue a little bit, just because they haven't really gotten into a lot of the nitty-gritty that's on the STAR test, especially fractions in fourth grade, and that was what a lot of the questions were, and so we've done a lot of digging to kind of pinpoint where some issues are. A lot of teachers have also been working on, um, like doing some spiral review or, um, really being intense and purposeful with their math stations or math menu times, which I think has really helped contribute to the scores.
So we broke the, um, the STAR data into different demographics. Um, this first slide shows you the difference between the, the males and the females here at Weathersfield in STAR reading. And you can go to the next one.
All right, and then this is, it is very interesting that it's a little bit different, kind of, uh, lopsided than the reading, but, um, this is the breakdown for the winter, for the fall, for the females and the males for math. You can go to the next one.
So, um, we also looked at the comparison of students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch and students who are not eligible. Um, and this is kind of a tricky one because we are not, because of confidentiality, we are not supposed to know. But, um, here's the data.
Kristin, can you just repeat that last thing you were cutting out a little bit?
Okay, so I was just saying that because of confidentiality, we are not allowed to know the students in these, in this category of free and reduced lunch eligibility, so it's very difficult to target students in this category to, when we think about looking at data, you know, our goal is, is to, to make the data better, to, to get in there and, uh, fill the holes. But we can't do that necessarily with these students because we do not know who they are.
Thank you.
Okay, and then this is the STAR math, so the one, um, the first one is the free and reduced, and then the second one is the not eligible for a free and reduced lunch. Um, I think some of the other part too of it is we don't necessarily have that same pathway with the free lunch still, it kind of makes it a little tricky because not everybody fills out the paperwork and stuff because they don't need to at this point. So sometimes I think, um, we may not have all the correct numbers in there, I guess, could say, but.
So, we have to apologize for this slide on behalf of Renaissance, we're also working with Renaissance on this. Um, we were able to run the data for students who are on an IEP, but we were unable to run data for students not on an IEP, and I've been back and forth with Renaissance for about a week now, and they keep moving me up to a higher level. So hopefully they're gonna figure this out by the spring, so we can show you a comparison. But, um, at least we have the data for the students who are currently on an IEP in the school.
We can go to the next one. And then that's the same thing again, we've got the students on an IEP for math, and then, um, we, oops, on the other side, that we're still working on.
So one of the things that the board had asked for was to see growth over time, so we've created those charts to show you the longitudinal, um, data. So this is our current first grade, um, they take the early literacy, so you can see all the way on the left, that's, that was when they were kindergarteners in the winter and then kindergartners in the spring. And then you can see their fall scores and their winter scores. And, you know, there's, there's different factors that play into that, uh, the kindergarten expectations, the kindergarten standards are a lot different than the first grade standards. There's maybe more structured time in first grade than there is in kindergarten, and, and some kids don't react as well to that as others. So we're still hoping to see those scores grow. This is our current second grade, um, there's no math data for our current first, first grade because they don't take a math test in kindergarten. So our current second grade, all the way on the left, you can see their early literacy scores, and you can see, um, they went from high red to low red, and then you can see where they are currently in second grade. Um, we're currently at 5% in the red, which is that significantly below, uh, the standard. So they've made some really great growth.
Okay, and this is the current second grade, um, and you can see their reds were pretty stable, but they definitely now in the wintertime are going down, and the blue, um, is definitely increasing as well, so they're, um, improving over time.
Our current third graders, you can see once again, they're making really good growth, and that's, um, we saw that in the DIBELS as well, so it's, it's, I would say, very valid.
Okay, and this is the third, current third grade, um, they, the red kind of still stayed the same, but really a lot of their blue, um, really increased and things there, so we're seeing some, still some really good growth with third grade as well.
Well, our current fourth grade, um, when you look at the, the data, there, more than half of our fourth graders did not score proficient on the STAR test in the winter. And, um, you know, we've seen this before with some classes, they don't do well in the wintertime. Um, we've also been able to talk with the fourth grade teachers and, and come up with plans. Um, the fourth grade teachers are wonderful about wanting to, to make this better for their kids. And, um, we've got plans in place to, to hopefully see a growth in the spring.
I think, Kristin, they missed the, the fourth grade reading slide, what was mixed in with the math slide too, so I think they skipped to that, but that's okay. So math, um, there was growth too, but now it's back to the fifth grade reading for you.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay, so, um, with fifth grade, we've got, um, some good growth, we've got some work to do.
We can go. And then the fifth grade, um, definitely made some good growth in their math, um, skills. Um, even if you just look at this year from the fall to the winter, they've made some great growth.
Our sixth grade continues to do well, and we're, we're proud of them.
And they continue to hold strong, definitely with their math.
Seventh grade is also doing well, they haven't, they have no students that are scoring in the red, which is wonderful.
And the seventh grade for their math skills are, are still making that progress, um, getting better with their red scores and going on up.
And then once again, just a reminder with our eighth graders, we are missing, um, our algebra students in both the fall data and the winter data. We didn't catch it until it was too late, so, um, hopefully we will have all of that data complete for this grade.
And the same thing is for the math, because I definitely know there will be, um, a green score in there as well. So they're definitely, the algebra students will make an impact on, um, those charts.
Let me just want to show you how Weathersfield is doing compared to the SU. Well, on the left, you can see, um, our Weathersfield score of 62.35% proficient. And across the SU, the, the proficiency is 57%.
And in the math, we were, uh, 54%, and the SU is about 40, 42%. We're definitely doing a good job here at Weathersfield.
Sounds good. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions about the, uh, data that you just saw? Um, we can, definitely we'll make sure that's correct as far as with the algebra students, because I think, my gut is telling me that we'll get a bump, a little bit of math and reading, um, for those scores as well. And, you know, it's great to see where our kids are going, and we have work to do still, but it's also the middle of the year, so we still have almost half the year, we have another 77 days, something like that, left us going, so we're just a little bit of a halfway point, but we'll continue to grow with those students as well.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, is there any funding tied to any of that data that we just saw? As far as addressing any problems?
Well, we have title funds that we get from, so we have our five, six interventionists right now, so we do have title funds that are, are strong, used to help students that are in need.
Okay.
Um, and so we do get some money for that, without teacher or interventionist.
Okay.
I have the B, the special ed fund, just generally, get used to support our students.
Okay, I'm just looking at when, where the data is, when it's compiled, how it lines up with what assessments and what the reimbursement, if there's any ties in.
And why I still have Kristin on there for sure, and I'll make sure, um, so you were asking about standardized testing. So our schedule does start on March the 10th, so it is a familiar this year, so the VT cap. Uh huh. And part of the thinking with that, because we have science in fifth and eighth grade, and then grades through 3rd, 8th, we'll take language arts and then math. And so we're trying to do that because the window for the state starts then, and it goes through our spring break, and so we don't want students to be taking the tests during spring, you know, having that break, taking a break from the test. So we had to make the decision to do it earlier, because students, once they start the test, have to finish it within five days as well.
Okay, so it's a tight, it's a tight window.
It's a tight window, and we tried to make the best of it. So we're starting off with science with just fifth and eighth grade, then going to reading, language arts, and then finally into math.
Okay, that just, that seems really early in the year, so I just was curious if there's a, there's an effect to.
Sure.
Yeah, definitely will.
Because, okay.
Content won't be covered.
Yep.
Almost content on the test won't be covered yet, right?
Well, that, that's just it, I mean, I'm looking at it, I'm going, you're almost 30% of your, of the total teaching time back into the schedule, so.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, Mark, we don't set those dates.
You, you don't set those dates, okay.
We are given a window.
All right, well, that answers my question.
Yeah, okay, so that's our window, and, you know, you have to stick to it.
Okay.
It's the same window across the state, so everybody's.
Oh, so every, so.
Everybody has to do it.
That's the whole thing.
Yeah, it's, when the spring breaks are, and some people take the spring breaks at different times.
Right.
Could change that, but.
Yeah, so it's, it's not gonna be a perception problem with us versus other schools in the state, because we're all in the same window. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you again. All right, then we have Jim Tapp here, da-da-da, Jim Tapp. So he's gonna talk to us a little bit about, um, facilities report, and.
How are you?
Hello.
Thank you for inviting me to talk about the Weathersfield maintenance. Um, I'd like to take a minute to try to explain it to you. Our belief is, our belief that every school is, um, we service, we service the staff and the students during the day. And once dismissal comes, the goal is that the place is as clean as it can be, safe, secure, and ready to open the next day. Our main tool behind that is what we have called the building's ground spot. So if a teacher needs this time of year, it needs tissues, they put in buildings, they put in buildings repair that they need to. Somebody gets them. The reason why we do that is, we never say no to anybody, but it helps with inventory costs and seasonal things. Repairs, if repairs can be anything from, you notice a leaky water closet, to your door's not working right, to a tile's loose, simple, simple everyday repairs. So that goes into the maintenance part of it. We take that, I take that. When they, they give it to me, I take that and I prioritize how, how, how emergency it is, do I need to get somebody right there? Does the person, the lead person that we have here during the day, can he and should he be able to handle that? Or do I and somebody else have to come and help him? So we start there and build our list. On top of that list, um, the thing that I'm proud of, I hope, I hope you guys will be too, that what, what we do for you, which I work for you, what we do for you is, I give, we give you 24-hour monitoring of your business, seven days a week. I mean, we got that, we got that through a grant, basically through the COVID grant, where on my phone, I can tell you basically what the temperature is in every room in this building. This place here, I've never seen anything like it, like, about three times a month, power will go out. If power goes out, somebody's gotta be here to restart everything. We've gotta make sure the pump house is good and is running, the wood chip boiler, because we want to always burn wood chips, we're gonna make sure that that stuff can run it. Sometimes that will take me or another guy 10 minutes, sometimes you can be here hours to get stuff running. We monitor the fire system, heating system, the pump room, and, like I said, power averages. To give you a, a basic understanding, I guess the best example I could give you of monitoring the fire system, BJ was here then, the art teacher left the kiln, left the kiln on, and it snapped, and it snapped the sprinkler. I got it just as soon as it happened, huffing my truck and got here with another maintenance guy, and thank God, I had, we had parts, we had parts for it, we fixed it before it flooded the whole school, it just flooded outside here like three inches of water, so. That's basically, that's basically what I'm good for. The heating system, the heating system, this time of year, you guys, you guys always have, take great pride in the wood chip. Like I spoke before, that, that needs to be cleaned out daily. Like, it doesn't take a break, you're, you're a wood chip farmer, you're coming in Sunday and cleaning, and cleaning out the wood chip boiler. We're very lucky on that wood chip boiler, and I'm very proud of that because we, over the last eight years, we've spent very little money on that. And when they bought it from Metro Smith, there was a guy, there was like one guy, and I lucked out and met him, that does all of North America. So the only time that we've had a real problem there, I called him and he was in Arkansas or something. But he walked us through, so we're doing pretty good, we're doing pretty good with that. Um, and then when you get to bigger things, um, I just like to work, I just like to work and I like, I don't, I usually, I, I believe that our job is to fix everything and make this place better without people realizing that we did it. For instance, like that wall, we enjoyed building that wall, it's a great thing for the school, but I definitely don't need a pat on the back for us building a wall. So, um, I guess some of the other examples I could give you is, um, like when I first started here, they had a problem with overheating on the second floor, brought in efficiency Vermont, who we worked with, we came up with the idea that we tried to insulate the second floor. So the only thing Weathersfield had to buy was the roll of insulation, and we crazily insulated, insulated the second floor. Uh, the COVID grant, we lucked out here during COVID, which is great during, now moving forward, like I said, they helped us out with the graphics, made sure our controls were good. But the big thing during COVID that, that where we lucked out on that is, it's like, it's how many air changes you can have in your building an hour. You know, so we're up to now, like, we, we lead the state, we can have eight to 10 air changes an hour and continue our footprint, which is great. The other thing that we have that you wouldn't think of, but like during flu season, is that on a push of a button, I can push, I can have 90% max ventilation, so in other words, if it wasn't freezing outside, I can blow nothing but. So in other words, if it wasn't freezing outside, I can blow nothing but fresh air into this building for as long as we want. All I have to do is program it for an hour, ten hours out. So hopefully, that helps keeps it sterile. Lead water, when we went through the lead water testing, like, we replaced the faucets, and then if the faucet didn't pass, we replaced the filters. So now everything's up and running as fast as, I mean, we were, Brian wanted the basketball goals and the sports gone from the, from the other room. We got rid of that, now they're just full sun, trimmed along the fence, trimmed along the fence, so they could put the new fence up. Found some new green product, because you have a student that is very allergic to poison ivy, found some new green product. Came out, it came out here where nobody's here, so we could spray that to reduce, reduce the growth of poison ivy and hopefully eliminate it altogether. The funnest job that I've done here is when the wood chip, wood chip bin was contaminated, so in the snow, they forgot that they had tents during COVID and all that, and then last year. And so within the wood chip, within the wood chip bin, there was miscellaneous metal that we had to take out of there in order to get it to run, so that was great. Then, like, the latest thing that we, the latest thing that we did, the other snow day that we had, we had like nine lights out in the gym. We were able to fix seven. The reason why we didn't fix eight, nine is because we didn't have the battery. The other question was, that I got from my boss, was that, you guys have a licensed electrician? No. I, I feel we're pretty clever, like, I don't ever talk about electricity, because there's guidelines that we work under. Like, I think it's, I don't make the laws, but I think it's crazy that we'd have to have somebody, a licensed electrician come in and hook valves in, but sometimes that's the law. Plumbing's a little easier. We pretty much try to take care of everything plumbing that we can, that we have equipment for. So I guess that's what you're paying me for. Any questions?
Um, I don't know if you would know this, but Don Erickson asked me if, what kind of lighting you currently use? Are we on fluorescent or in this LED?
We're trying to change everything to LED as we go.
Okay.
And what we, what we do there, rolling into talking about money, is, is I, we have a great relationship with efficiency Vermont, and I try to wait. We, I, we try to wait until they're, because they always have incentives and grants. So when they have an incentive or a grant.
Backups.
We get it, and then they'll take it. The great thing that I like is they do most of the paperwork.
What would you say are percentages of LED to regular fluorescent?
Forty.
Forty?
I might be low, but we're not.
Not quite half yet?
No, we'd like to get to eighty within the next year and a half.
Okay.
So then, somebody gave me a paper with, I think it's sixteen highlights about questions for money. So the thing that I got says last year, and the first, the first item was seven hundred and forty-eight dollars air merchant, which was removing tile, replacing tile in that small room to the right over there. That, that was, that was something that we couldn't do. Pump tech, in case you guys don't know what pump tech is, they, we get our storm water, our storm water drains inspected every year. And they pass or fail depending on how much contaminant is in them. And also on top of that, we have a very elaborate sand filter system here, and I fought with a guy for three years, because it's expensive. So like, as I said, I'll crawl down there and shovel it out, but, I mean, actually, I wasn't going to shovel eight of them at eight feet out. But last year, last year, in order to get our, in order to get passed on that, we had to have all storm wa, and it was a rough year. We had to have all storm water drains pumped out along with our sand filters, so that's where the seventy-six hundred dollars came from pump tech. It was for storm water drains. The big one, that, the big one that hits pretty much fifty percent of the bills here, is the ninety-four hundred to control tech for, where it says hot water. That's our hot water heater. That's the big one, that's the big one downstairs that runs off over here, that runs off the wood chip boiler. And everybody looked at it and said it was no good, you know, and so I got, I got quotes and talked to everybody I knew. And to replace, to replace that and everything that goes with it, the cheapest we got was like a hundred and four thousand. So I looked at the tank itself, and, um, actually brought a picture, I looked at the tank itself, and I talked and researched, and I figured that I, if we could get, if we could get the coil clean, if we could get the coil clean, then we could rebuild it for a lot cheaper than that, save ourselves money. So that's what I decided to do. So the ninety-four on that is basically the reconstruction of it. There's a lot more moving forward, like disassembly, reassembly. I came, we, the maintenance department, we came transferred the coil into our truck, built a container so that we could put it up, built a chain ball so that we could put it up. And part of the billing moving forward is the acid, because we spent, I sent Christine the picture this summer. We spent, I spent basically three and a half weeks getting that, getting the, getting the rust out of it back to proper. Not that interesting, but I actually have a picture of it, if you don't see it.
So is that all that Control is managing in this building?
What's that?
Is that the only piece of equipment that Control Technologies is managing in this building?
No, we haven't, no.
Okay, because it's a lot larger or the?
No, that, that's just for that one bill.
Okay.
If something breaks.
Okay.
If something breaks, they let us know, but no, the management of that, if, if it's something, we have seven, seven heat recovery units here. So say one of the heat recovery units goes down, I'll go and try to fix it. If we can't fix it, with, under the contract that we have, they prevent the maintenance end. But that gives us a break on the rate, if they have to come fix it, if we can't fix it. So that's how they make their money. That's, or they don't actually control anything. They control what we call.
Right, right, right. My, my question would be, in the discovery of some of the invoicing that's occurred over time.
Right.
From that company, it came up in our budget discussion, that it seems like, A, it's a pretty large number for regular maintenance or repairs, whichever one those are. And B, it, they're here a lot fixing recovery units or something. So I think it came up because, A, we're, we're looking at efficient ways to reduce our budget.
Absolutely.
And B, what's wrong with the building? Why? Why are they here so much? And what is wrong with these recovery units or whatever they're doing here? As, as one of your vendors, their, 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 the expense for them really supersedes a lot of other.
Oh, absolutely.
So we're wanting to understand, what do they do here? And why are they being called so much if you're also getting called to come do repairs?
Oh, I repair, I try to repair everything that I can, if we can, if we can get ours for it.
Yep.
So to bluntly answer your question on number one is, is that within the school district, I think this is the best kept building on the outside, if you look cleanliness and all that. Boards prior, prior to you weren't good on spending money on infrastructure. So for instance, we've got, why, perfect example, why is Control Technology coming on, coming on a pump? Just because we've rebuilt the pump as much as we can, and it's outdated. It's now fifteen years old. Like, why, we've got, we've got the wood chip boiler down there, except for the stuff that we know. They, Metro Smith or nobody has been in here recently, to my knowledge, to PM that. I, I'm a firm believer in, uh, preventive maintenance and also performance decay. That's where we, that's where we have to catch up. Performance decay is, you build a brand new house, you know it as well as I do. Soon as you walk, soon as you walk through the threshold, the house is, it's going to need something. If you keep pushing it off, eventually you can't. That's, that's the best answer that I can give you.
I think that's what we're asking. Is there systems in this building, say, for example, what you just spoke of, that do need, like, have they had maintenance to the max, and now we just need a new one? I guess that's what we wanted to know.
No, they haven't had maintenance to the max, because part of the, like, four thousand or whatever it is, I don't mean to be cavalier, but four thousand, I can't remember whatever it is. For the boiler there is, the second boiler over here has to be recastated. Like, there's a lot of that, that you can't expect, that has been, that has been kicked down the road due to money of past administration, to be one hundred percent honest.
So you're saying we're just kind of catching up now, like, trying to, and that we should eventually kind of get on top of this, so it'll be a normal?
Absolutely. I'm saying if everybody does due diligence of preventive maintenance, it's exactly what should, it should prevent something. There's certain things that will still go wrong, but it shouldn't lower, we should be lowering, every year, we should be lowering the actual repair cost. Something to go, for instance, yeah, that's the other part where you have to, Control Technology did it. They put in the, um, they didn't put in the condensers up, up top. I couldn't put them in or get the parts. Thirteen-five, so either you put those condensers in, and you have AC for the offices and up there, or you don't. There's no fix, there's certain, there's things like that that are going to go.
So more recently, when they're here, like, every day, what are, what have they been doing, like, more recently? I guess that's one of the questions that we had, was, we see their vans here a lot, like, what are they, what have they been working on in particular?
A lot of times lately, when they've been here, they've been doing belts and filters, because they, we have the, we have a contract with them on that. Because by the time we did all the belts and filters, we'd have time for nothing else. So they come for that. And then there's going, and then there's PMs on them. For instance, for instance, one of the, one of the expenditures was, classroom one sixteen was two motors, two motors for the cabinet unit. They come, they come in preventive maintenance on that, because we didn't have enough people at the time to do it all.
So what's included in this contract? Like, is, is this preventative maintenance part of our contract? Or is this?
Yes.
On top of? So does that price that Vincent is talking about, is that our contract plus the extras? That figure, that the large figure he's talking about?
So with every contract, they give you X number of extra hours. Well, that's one of the selling points for all of us. So if we have them here for forty hours, they might give us forty-five, so we got five free hours for them to do something. But besides that, if you call them, if we call them, it's eighty dollars an hour. You call them, and you have to have them fix that, fix a mowing, they're going to charge you eighty bucks an hour. There's no way around that. But they're here for belts and filters and preventive maintenance on the equipment.
I think, alluding to what Sarah was saying, that we're looking at more of an overtime figure that seems to be large, and not just like this year, you know, over the last few years. So we're just, we're concerned that, A, they're not, they're, they're just band-aiding things every time that they're here, or, and B, sorry to keep blabbing, but. And B, if we need to, as a board, look at a major infrastructure repair in order to avoid these bills that come in every month from this company, like, we should, we should have that information here.
Correct.
So if there are things that you know while working with them, right, I mean, I've read some of the invoices, they're very, they're very long and drawn up. There's a ton of things that they're doing, more than coils, more than modings, more than any splits, you know, here. And if there's a systemic problem that we are seeing, you know, with that company, we should look at whether the vendors are right one. And B, you know, you've got to come here, or Brian, or whoever is getting, getting the information, you need to come here and tell us, so that we can fix this problem for the next three budgets that we're going to do. And, and we're not going to just look at these little things like this, there's, there's probably landmore that we haven't, we don't know about yet either.
Right.
So.
I agree. I, I hate being, when I want to come. Because, because you're exactly right, because the more you're preventing maintenance, the more it should come down, it really should come down.
Yep.
But if, if you have three pumps, and they've been limping along, they're fifteen, fifteen thousand bucks a piece, eventually they're going to go, and you should know that.
Right.
You should want to know that.
Right, right.
And that should be part of a five-year.
But as Sarah said, having the, the truck here every day produces, you know, expenses that are, you know, we're, we're at the top of our budget now, right, already? And it's halfway through the year, or close to it.
I think, I think.
Close.
I think some of that money, I'm just vaguely remembering what Larry told me, so.
I don't have it.
Was the floor.
Yep.
And that would get moved from the capital reserve, so it's not as bad as it is.
Right.
I don't think you're at the top.
Right.
That, that money will go back into that account.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. So yes, so you're the one in charge of dispensing the information to us? Like, just who, who reports back to you if there are problems, you know, like, hey, we need to call Control again, or hey, we need to call them again? Who's making that decision?
Generally, if I hear about it, it's from the lead guy here, Brian.
Okay.
Brian will call.
Yeah, okay.
And I try to make it, I, I try to clean it up issue-wise, where I'm making the decision on if they're, if they're doing something or not.
Right, right.
It's easy to say yes, when you have to look at, I agree one hundred percent, you have to look at the whole picture.
Right.
And moving forward. But I thought this year we were right on track, except for thirty-six, thirty-six for the gym floor and.
Right.
That has to get put back into the account.
Yep.
So I think, I, I think we're, I don't think we're at the top of expenditures.
In the spring, we should go through a walkthrough. My recommendation is that we walk through, so you see exactly, exactly what you have for equipment.
We can have that arranged?
Yeah.
Do that?
And then you can pull out your crystal ball and tell us what's going to break when. Oh, there's stuff, it's a very good point, because there is stuff that's living on. Yeah, so I guess what we're saying is, we welcome that input. I love it.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we just want to be made aware, so we're not racking up, you know, repair bills, where, you know, obviously, I know your first goal is to just get it fixed, to keep the building running, and we appreciate that. But looking, you know, going back a few years and then looking ahead a few years, we just, we want to make good decisions about, if something large does need to be replaced, then we need to look at that versus just keep repairing, keep repairing. I, that, that's what, really what we're getting at.
Sounds good.
Everybody good?
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much, Jim. Or spring water.
Yeah.
Did you have more to present?
Um, just upcoming events, wanted to let you know, so tomorrow, because of, we were originally scheduled on Thursday to our school film D, but I do look at my crystal ball, and I see that we have include weather coming up on Thursday. And, and, and so we might not have school on Thursday. Um, you know, we don't want snow days over, but, but so we have our school film D tomorrow, and we have judges coming for that. We also have our last Lego League of the year for that one. And then next week, of course, is winter break. Town meeting day is on, on, or Saturday, March first, Town voting day. March sixth, Camp Read-A-Lot, which we are really excited about doing that. That is a K-five literacy night that we're having here at school, and our leadership students are helping as long, along with ETO and then some of our staff members. Which should be a fun event, that's a Thursday. And then I anticipated a, we're being with the eleven, because that's the second Tuesday. So that's our upcoming events. And then before we do the budget presentation, I'm going to go ahead and let the Stilson present on its nickels. And then we can go back to regionalization before we go to the budget report, if you guys are not going to be done.
Good evening, everyone. So I am the chairperson for the Hicks Nichols Committee. And I'll put aside Houston. And so I have an application here that the board, we would like, the committee would like the board to approve. And BJ is one of the persons who's filled out the application, so she will correct me if I'm wrong on that. Uh, but it's BJ, Westwood Weathersfield Fire Department Chief Josh Dolphin, and Scotty Volunteer Fire Department Chief Derek Kearney. And the best way I can describe it is like, it's a bounce house, and it's about fire safety. And it would be stored between the three, you know, it might be stored here, it might be at a Scotting Fire Station, Westwood Weathersfield Fire Station. Um, they bring it out for, you know, the coin drop and any community event that might be happening here at school, like a car show or, or anything that, that something like that that's happening. Um, eventually, not right off, but eventually, they'd also would be doing it at other community events that might be happening in Windsor or Brownsville or Reading or something like that. They'd have some sort of sheet and have people in charge of it and everything. And Laura Barry has bounce houses that she puts in her gym, you know, when we do our field day and things, and it's very similar to that. It's that heavy-duty plastic vinyl. But anyway, so it's, they talk about the Fire Prevention Education Days, which they've done every year at Weathersfield for a long time. And they wanted something more hands-on, where students could get involved. And so this is the particular thing that's a fun learning activity that they would be doing about, you know. that they would be doing about, you know, proper fire safety for all of the students here at Westwood Field. So she had filled out the application in regards to criteria and everything else, took that. Um, and then they came, she, we, we talked about it at Hicks Nichols Committee, and then they came, the three of them came to another committee meeting so that we could ask them questions or concerns or anything like about storage and this, that, the other thing, where it would be stored and so forth. Um, so they would like, um, twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars, um, and the committee said yes to that. Um, but as the proper procedure where you are coming to the board, the committee is to vote for the board's approval. And there's plenty of money in the Hicks Nichols account covering this.
Okay, what did you say the amount was, twenty?
Twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Okay. And, um, and you also mentioned that you have someone new you want to.
We have, um, a person named, his name is Josh Compo, he lives in Westwood Field, um, he had reached out to Amy Beth Main, who's also one of our members on the committee. Um, and he'd like, he's interested in joining the Hicks Nichols Committee, and so he would join as a community member.
And did we have another community member stepped down, or was this additional?
No, we can take another, we can take more.
Oh, okay. And what was his name again?
Josh Compo, C-O-M-P-O.
And is, is, he's just a community member, is he a parent, or?
No, he's, he's a parent.
Parent.
He's a parent.
Is he a firefighter?
He's gotta get one then, okay.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Uh, who's gonna have the liability insurance? As of, I was gonna be my question.
So I think it's whoever's using it, whatever, um, department is using it at that time. So like if it was at the Scotty Fire Department and has something, they'll have it, we are using it, it will have it. It's the same coverage that we, uh, sorry, Laura Barry has on hers. And then if we go out and reach out to the community, they would sign a waiver that it would be their liability. Like it's Windsor, we'd only allow fire departments to use it, and it wouldn't be brought to a public, the birthday parties or anything.
Right.
Because it's a training tool, not just, it's more than a bounce house, it's a training tool, there's a component in it that'll, uh, do the training. So that's why we said to local volunteer fire departments or fire departments, so they could use it for that, and they would assume liability, we'd have a waiver form for them to sign, bring this liability complex.
It's, it's worth a dollar.
So the bounce house itself is specific for fire prevention?
Yes.
Oh, neat, okay, well, I didn't get that from that, I just thought it was like a regular, okay, so it's an actual fire prevention, yeah.
No, it's, it's one thing to do, there's a slide on it, it's huge, it, it's a slide on the side, just you go inside and tell me that, call nine-one-one. And you can just add different things to it.
That makes more sense, at first I just thought it was like, when you said hands-on, I was like, okay, they're gonna bounce in a bounce house, but that makes sense. It's, it's an interactive way for them to understand what they need to do in case of a fire.
Fire safety in event or emergency, we're making it fun, and it'll be hands-on thing.
Makes more sense.
I don't want this to come across negative or anything, but, you know, we've had Fire Prevention Day here for, you know, years and years, you know, and you bring a truck and everybody gets to see the truck and the firefighters and this, that, and the other thing, so this, I, of myself personally, I look at this as something kind of new and adventurous for the students.
If they're interested.
You know, that's the way I look at it.
Okay.
I missed, um, the vote, uh, because of our meeting, uh, on that, but my, I, I, my question would be, is there like a manual that people are gonna have to you, to you, setting it up and using it, the safety things, and people are trained to operate this?
Yeah.
Blow it up and, and do that here?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's a written, something written about that somewhere?
It comes in Josh Dolphin, our chief over in Westwood Field, so it's like a big duffel bag.
Yeah.
And it's heavy-duty vinyl stuff, so like mice wouldn't, would not be getting through it, mice haven't done anything with Laura Barry's stuff that's stored here for her field day that she does, um, and her other little events that she uses for bounce houses for.
Correct.
So the fire departments themselves are gonna be the main users and also know how to properly use it, sounds like, yes?
So between the three of them, so depending upon what's happening, so if it's, if they're gonna use it for the pot drop, then the item will be here.
But they would be executing that on the field, yeah, that, I think that's what you were getting at, right?
Right, right.
Yes, Mr. Murches.
Size limit, I say size for weight limit.
What's that, you have to the kids, they get stuck in it. So can I just elaborate on something?
Yes, sure.
So we found that our, our service stage when we have this fire prevention is, we were lacking, we tried to get different things coming in, like one time we tried to get dark, and it we were all ready for dark and it canceled last minute, but they had to call. Like, I'm talking, we were all outside.
We were, so excited, so excited.
We were more. And it canceled last minute. We had a smokehouse here once that the kids just loved, and it's so hard to book these things, you have to be a year in advance to get any kind of learning tool. So we thought we could bring it to us as in Westwood Field, and then elaborate the community of, about it. To, once we give this, you know, squared away, what's, what's it like, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good, okay, um.
So do we need a separate motion for that? Do we vote on that now, or?
Um, well, we could, um, we could vote on it now, I mean, if you want. If someone wants to make a motion to approve, um, the twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars for the fire prevention bounce house, I will take motion.
I'll move so, can we add on the approval of Josh Compo?
Yeah, we, um, Josh. Um, I was just gonna do them separate, but.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, uh, any, um, any, uh, any comments or concerns? Okay, I'll take, I'll do a vote then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous?
For the.
Any for the bounce house? And then I will take the motion to approve Josh Compo.
Compo?
Compo.
Compo.
Joining the, um, Hicks Nichols Committee as a community member. Okay, Sarah made that. Is there any discussion? No, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that's all, so unanimous, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, I jumped ahead so that you still didn't have the thing, the regionalization.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, we went out of order.
So, yeah, this was really brief and rather informal, um, several of us were meeting, um, we didn't have more than two members from any different boards, so it wasn't really anything we needed to warn about. Again, it was very informal, just trying to look down the road as far as what budget constraints, um, we knew we're gonna be hitting Montpelier this upcoming year. Uh, so there were people from various different communities, uh, business community, educators, administrators, uh, people on select boards, just kind of looking down the road, looking at different strategies that, uh, might be palatable to the general public. And one of the things that was, was discussed was how do we establish the whole notion of, um, any regionalized school um, in terms of consolidating, and during the, the few meetings we had, um, and they may be ongoing and moving on from here, I'm not really sure what, what the schedule is, um, but I think we're to the point now where the general strategy is just having determined appetite, is that middle school and elementary school, people are not on board with having their kids go a long time on a bus to a centralized, uh, learning location. It is, um, however, a reality that we need our taxes, our, our property taxes to go down. Um, and looking at what Woodstock has gone through, we're just not at a point in terms of funding throughout the whole state that we have tucked away these piles of money to replace all of these individual structures and entities as they run through their lifespan, and they're, they're no longer viable. Um, because we're, we're seeing that, like, with Woodstock, I think the last estimate was a hundred and eight million dollars. And at some point, you have to replace that structure, and it's just not there, you can't, with the population of Vermont, can't spend a hundred and eight million dollars on basically educating, just the facility for educating four hundred students. It's just not there. Um, so basically, what we were brainstorming about was various different ways, um, that we can go about this. Nothing was decided, nothing was negotiated. Um, it was simply looking at various different out-of-the-box ideas for what properties can be donated, what is the radius? Um, and then determining pockets that, or ways that we might determine pockets based on what infrastructure is going to need to be replaced. It's something radically different than what was recently proposed by the governor. Um, there was, we had no conversations about consolidating to five districts, anything like that. We just looked down the road and said, okay, what communities are their high schools running out of lifespan? Like, in the next five, ten years are gonna need to be replaced, and how can we look it up? And what we arrived at was basically a forty-five-minute commute for the longest commute for the student. And what, basically, where can we look at, if we have to replace the structure, what's gonna be the most bang for the buck, and how many students and how many communities can you lump into that? Um, and that's basically where we left off. Um, and then there was a whole new grand plan handed down by the governor, and now it's up to the legislature to start dealing with those different, um, suggestions and come up with their own plan and altering that plan in a way that works for all the voters. So, uh, just in case word got out that people were talking, nobody is negotiating any consolidation of schools or districts or anything like that. We're just, um, kind of brainstorming and figuring out different ways that we can go about this. But the, the general consensus of the people that I was meeting with was simply that the appetite is not there for middle school or elementary school consolidation.
Thank you. Any questions, anybody have?
I just wanted to say that I think it is good to at least talk about it because I know when, um, Act Forty-six is a little before my time when I started school boarding. But, um, I know I was told by a lot of people that we were extremely lucky here in Westwood Field and how things turned out for us as far as Act Forty-six went. A lot of other districts didn't get as much say in what happened to them. And the reason why we had as much say as we did in what happened to us then was because people had planned ahead and were planning for what was coming down the road and had something set up, and so it's good to, it's good to plan for what's coming.
Yeah, well, that, that honestly was part of what we were thinking, we were trying to be proactive about this and get out our thoughts and feelings of the population um, instead of just taking orders from Montpelier. Um, and the other thing that bears some thinking is, if you look at the number of supervisory districts in Vermont, it's pretty obvious that not the entire state did the work that this area did in terms of combining their smaller schools into one SU. We did the work, we did what was, what was needed to combine and reduce, um, you know, the, the number of bodies, and I was really surprised because before I looked at that map, I assumed everybody had done it. Everybody had, and then I looked around, I'm like, mm, no, we're kind of the exception. We really, as, as separate communities, we did the work and some of it was painful. Um, but it needed to be done, and now the state as a whole, I think, is gonna do more catch-up to get up to the point where, where we already are, so.
Okay, um, so we wanna move on to the budget?
You guys ready?
Information session run through.
All right.
Wow, big attendance.
Well, it's not our most exciting meeting of the year.
No.
They don't wanna, they don't wanna spoil the surprise, March first, that's why they didn't come.
It's like a gender reveal. Straight livers. Really good. Creative, that helps.
This is AI?
AI.
Sunday.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna lose our six viewers. We're gonna lose our six viewers with all this.
I have no idea. They're repeating this morning that we're talking about. Wires got wet.
Now, is your truck?
I have internet, but I don't have.
Right, because.
It's not, it's not. I, I, I do now, but I don't see yours in it.
All right, I can sign, can I sign here?
Yes.
Maybe we lost one already.
Does somebody have a dance review or something they have?
I know, huh? I, I have an announcement, um, is it the twenty-second?
It is the twenty-second.
Okay, at.
At ten AM.
Ten AM, okay, so at ten AM, um, on the twenty-second at the Windsor Welcome Center, uh, anybody who's interested, there's, uh, Christine and Bill and Elizabeth Burrows, anybody else?
Rebecca Holcomb.
And Rebecca Holcomb are getting together, uh, and they're having a little pow-wow and expression of, uh, what's, what might happen to, uh, changes in education in Vermont um, this upcoming year, upcoming session, um, so they'll let you know if you'd like to discuss with them, uh, what could be coming down the pike.
Since February twenty-second, at what time?
February twenty-second, ten AM.
At that clock, at the Welcome Center in Windsor.
Which is conveniently close to Windsor Station.
They, they don't open until four.
They don't open until four, you don't plan on talking that long?
No.
Six hours? Well, luckily, Bill will be there.
Yeah, Bill.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, she's not here, that's so weird.
See, it's problems with the air already. It's the infrastructure.
Probably shouldn't go by memory.
I did have another question from John.
From John?
Yeah, John, he likes to just mail me like random questions. Why does this guy do? Is he better once he's on board?
If he doesn't email, actually.
And Megan's in attendance too, so Megan is running.
Up for this.
Or, yeah. You guys run with it?
Is it just you two or?
Um, I'm up.
You're up?
Yeah, Mark is not running again, um, so John and Megan will run, so that will.
Yeah. Mark is not running again. Um, so John and Megan will run for the spot. I think that's, I don't know that we have anybody running, running in here.
Oh, because we moved up right there. There's a spot.
John Aronson. He's running. So there are two one-year spots and one three-year spot. Okay.
Uh, okay, yeah. Mark, I didn't mean there.
He's actually an electrician too, so he might have a little trouble.
Yeah.
Like, Charlie.
He's what?
An electrician.
I think he's retired.
Seems fair. I get roped, I get roped into the set building. John gets roped in. No, that's Megan out there.
That was a maybe at the time, right? Yeah.
If necessary.
Oh, um, his other thing that he has was, um, H54, which is a bill that was introduced to legislature prohibiting cell phone and other social media in schools.
That's one that's in there. There's lots of, there's a lot, if you're listening, um, I try to log in when I can. There, there was a bill the other day that was. We do.
Yeah.
We do. Not a lot of schools already. Closing all schools that are under 400 students. And that bill's been proposed by Congress.
Close them?
Yeah, there's the number for elementary, the number for high school.
I just think, what do they propose to do with all the students?
I don't know. That would be free of our schools and where would they go? You'd have to build a new school, right? I mean, some of it is, I don't think they're thinking about geography and, uh.
If I, if I can chime in on other things that are kicking around out there, um, the ending of universal school meals, I think is a nightmare and not something we should be engaging in at all. Primarily because it's a tax burden thing. Right now Vermont is one of the receiving states. Basically a third of our budget comes from other states. It's from nationally. And that program was one of the, it came in astoundingly under budget from what it was supposed to be, what it was projected to cost. Um, so not taking advantage of universal school meals and continuing that is basically going to be turning down tax dollars from other states that Congress has already allocated towards us as a receiving state. So feel free to call your local legislator and senator and tell them that we don't want to get rid of universal school, um, school meals. Did you say done?
No, did that.
All right, we're there. All right. All right, now you guys ready? Yeah. All right.
Someone left, but we still have six. I guess we'll give it back. Oh, no, Brian joined. I don't know who that is.
All right. There you go. A little bit better. All right, it'll be better. We'll cut off the stop.
It's a run-through.
So first off, we're going through our articles. Article one, to approve the reports of the school district officers for the period from July 1st to 23rd.
Is that one of the ones that we vote on? Is that a four vote or is that everything?
Yeah. Elect the Wethersfield School District Officers for the ensuing term by answering bell. Article three, the vote for the Wethersfield School District is authorized to borrow money in anticipation of taxes to meet the requirements of the school district for the ensuing year and to authorize the execution and delivery of notes or orders to the Wethersfield School District by answering bell. Article four, shall the voters of the Wethersfield School District approve the school board to expend eight million, eight hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars, which is a amount the school board is determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. Wethersfield School District estimates that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in per-people education spending of fifteen thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents, which is 15.80% higher than per-people education spending for the current year by answering bell.
Do you also have that other number? Yeah, that by law, we definitely put that in. That is not a tax rate, that is.
Right.
The tax rate, you'll see.
That's confusing.
Yeah, I think it's very confusing.
So we need to be really clear about what that, what that is.
All right, article five, we'll turn back to the other business, which may probably come before the meeting. Any questions on the articles? We're going to the meeting. We have a school board representative. There's Marley. She told me, like, well, well, she's loving it, so we'll go there. Funding sources, sources of funds for our school, local taxes, State of Vermont Education Fund, federal, federal government grants, private grants, technicals, Walmart, amount of grants, generous donations from teachers, staff, parents, community, and organizations. Of course, our volunteers. Meeting student needs, how we meet student and family needs, special education, forbidden qualify. I please support their honest kids who do not serve through IEPs. We are hope. Advance eighth-grade math students who may access high school algebra. Expanding food program designed to serve better food to more kids. Students eat breakfast in lunch for free. Exennial grants, PTO funding, other grants, bring all kinds of extras to school and no-cost attack fares. Four wins, nature-based curriculum, positive on school program, serve families, share facilities. High attendance by students, staff, and teachers. Evening-based activities after school hour for families. Volunteer time.
Just on the previous slide, um, is the correction for the spelling of anonymous, but.
Oh, okay.
If you get a chance.
Funding first.
Yeah. The Y is in the wrong spot.
Yep. Thank you. That's why we do this. I can be there.
Such a font and that the meeting house be different because it's hard to read. No, I'm a meeting house worker. Cause it's on like the, the.
How old?
That one?
No, no, the one you just did.
The one you just did.
Meeting students.
Meeting students.
Oh, yeah.
We can put on it. It's right on the.
I mean.
Okay.
It's really hard to read. Just type that one.
Perfect, I can do that.
Make the box darker.
Or I can move it or just. Yeah, we'll figure it out. Okay.
From here, yeah, it's hard to read.
To down engagement. So I need to read everything together. Listen to this right now.
There's a town challenge.
Town challenge, can you add that on? Oh, there it is.
We're good, yeah.
They just nicked it, sir.
And I brought a notepad too, but I'm not taking that. That's something you guys good?
Can I just do geography again?
Um.
We can have the district.
Yeah.
I was just, I was wondering if that would be passed. This game.
Goals.
Can you go back to the other layout? Or have the larger?
It's bigger.
Larger screen.
Larger screen.
Yeah.
It's the corner arrows, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Better?
Yeah, I can read it. I got old eyes.
So do I. Here we go.
Yep.
It's just what? It's giving wait time. Prepare wait time for everybody being sure.
Everyone at home is seeing this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And what I can do is any updates I do, I can just go ahead and send it to you guys as well. Okay.
Good.
We kept driving around. We found a perfect farmhouse to take pictures of. I don't know, I guess. Sorry, just kidding.
Looks like one is good.
It does, it's, you know, it, it could be.
Yeah.
All right. Might be wood sock.
Is that supposed to be like the end, the middle part's supposed to be like the different angles like that?
Yeah, it is. I tried to add a little snaps to it. Here, go down, we get to the physical.
They're fine. They just wanna see the numbers.
All right, so drumroll.
That's fine. That's really.
Yeah, so we can enlarge it when we do. So what's, is nice is this is right from the budget book. Look, they're seen there. Oh, sorry.
See, I don't know why we have to put 15% on the voting thing and it's only six point.
Yeah. I was just hearing.
I was saying, we had that last year, right?
Yeah.
And then the 10-year tax rate is the one that we added last year, so I'm waiting for that slide. I'll show it to you. It's still last year's intention. I dumped it there as a placeholder. But I like the, I like the way this one came out because it showed longevity of where we're at.
Yeah, but now with the new way of figuring out the CLA though, doesn't it mess that graph up?
You're still gonna apply the CLA.
Okay, so.
It does have an effect.
Okay.
I should know, all right. Should I submit today's ad? Yeah, please do, right?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. No, we didn't do that. Again, that's right from, can you guys see that? Okay? I thought it was important to compare to what others within our SUVs put in as well. This is where I wanna be on the bottom?
And in red.
And in red, yes. This is the one time I wanna be in red. I mean, I like red, but not.
We made partners, we're very competitive.
Yeah. And you know, we, if you're comparing it to our star data, we don't wanna be in red. So this is the longitude. See where our moment's continuing to go up? We need to check snapshot of 21, 22 for the first year here, so. 250. That was 21, 22.
So do you have, is it that just from that year or do you have?
Yeah, that, that little box just highlights the, the years that we had to hide, the way the, the graph came out, you had to highlight one year, so I figured I'd take the first year I was here. And you can see how it's grown over the years since we. Coincidence?
Oh, that's the color.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm like trying to figure.
That's okay, no, and that's good though, but if you have questions about it, then maybe that's something that we need to do differently.
Well, I just was thrown off by the 21, 22, so I was like, is this graph showing, I don't, I didn't realize what you were trying to show.
It goes up to current right now, so it just shows again how much we've grown. And continue to grow as, as a school.
So now it says basically 286. Is that what you're?
Yeah, we're right around there. It's our average number this year. We're going up and. It's really strange because yellow is Albert Bridge.
Yeah.
And you look at the top of graph. Yeah.
Oh.
There it is. Okay, yeah, so once you zoom out, we see, we actually see Albert Bridge.
Yeah, Albert is Italian, it's a 1200.
It's really grown.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this is always a, a guesstimate because of when we get new students in throughout the year. It's based on current numbers and what we're projecting for kindergarten. Now we're at 236 for next year. We've got a rather small eighth-grade class that's leaving us. Um, and then maybe, I mean, getting more kids in, we gain and lose. So if we're looking at graphs with all the numbers of all the students, should we have an additional line down here of students that we're paying tuition for in high school?
I think we should.
Yeah.
Do we have high school ones in there?
Yeah.
We have high school. We have high school. Check that. Thought we did.
We have high school costs, but I don't think we have a high school.
Students enrolled in high school.
Yeah, I don't think we have a student enrolled in high school one year, so we can add that on there. Well, it's just that, no, it may be different. You're looking at our per-people cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can lump them together. You don't necessarily have to separate them out to the right. We want them separated out so you can see.
I think separate it separately.
Doesn't it have the, doesn't it have the number of students on this graph? Yeah, it does.
It does on that one?
Um, 98. That's why 24 total number of students is 98.
Oh, definitely.
In high school.
Yeah.
Number of students, 98.
So, yeah, we could separate that up, that it will show. You know, what the cost will be.
So then you're saying just high school students is 2,001,081? Yeah, I think that's. Yeah, I think that's a good slide to have.
Yeah, two of us, yeah. About forty-five percent of our cost.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. I remember whether it is high school tuition.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it makes it look like we're.
Yeah.
Which is dropped because your numbers have dropped over the next month.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's good, they should be graduating.
Do we have a big class coming up?
Was that high school number updated from when we, when Larry was here, we were going over the budget?
Yes.
Felt like it was larger in the budget than it is now.
Yeah, that's the most accurate as.
Okay, so we're gonna see, we're gonna see savings from what we were discussing in the budget prior.
There's a little bit.
If there were more students in that budget.
Yeah, and I don't remember that exact number, I can pull the, the book from the graph from that height, but it's a little bit different.
Yeah.
I don't know, where would it be?
So the book is updated now?
Yeah, the book online, that did, that's, that's.
Okay, okay. I'm like, wait, where's all this money gone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you go back to the number of students slide, the regulars, with K three? Eight. Student enrollment, yeah. Now the other, the one.
Oh, the projected?
Yeah.
Right.
So, so we have a pretty big eighth grade class, so we should expect a large increase in our high school tuition next year.
Next year. Yes.
Our base where?
Well, it might balance out, we'd have to look at what the seniors are that are graduating.
For twenty-seven years.
Yeah, what, what, uh, yeah, what's our twelfth grade, is it thirty?
I think that number's in the budget book, so I'm asking a question.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just, I'm sorry, I don't know where to look.
Is this projected for next year, or, so you're talking about twenty-seven?
Yeah, so she's talking about, because these, our age and age group, right now we're gonna be, next year we're gonna be at twenty high schoolers that are going into high school, or next year we'll be paying on thirty.
Yeah. Yeah.
The situation.
Right. Right. Sure, right, okay, just want to get the right years that we're looking at.
But we can do that number. Like our eighth grade class that graduated last year was a much larger class, because we had thirty-two, thirty-three last year.
Yeah. Right.
I know the budget book, my mind is up, high school tuition is like, and up above it has the high schools, the numbers, that, all the high schools, how many are going to each school?
Yeah, it doesn't have them broken down by what grade.
What grade, okay, yeah.
So I don't know how many are gonna be graduating next year.
But then our numbers all sort of balance out, and it's funny, which is nice, so the school will talk consistently, lines, highs and lows, but yeah.
Thanks.
Alright, and then, just questions, I was gonna catch all of yourself, I don't remember what I said.
Old isn't red. I can share, um, just, I'm gonna take a quick time. Um, so this afternoon, Larry, um,
Did you want me to put Sharon to you?
No, I was just on time, so, um, he, he got some information from the state. Not a done deal, just like, just say it out loud to start with. But there was presentation in the House Ways and Means and Finance Committees this afternoon, which, um, included the seventy-seven point two million dollar, um, one-time general fund transfer that the government's been talking about, um, which would adjust the yield up, which is good, and if, if it is adopted and signed, it's in committee right now, so it's not a done deal, your tax rate will go down to eight point seven percent in September. So, good news, but again, not a lot to, yeah.
So, good news for this year, but not good news for next year, right, because.
Right, anytime you're.
Because you're just moving money from one year to another.
Like plus what they have?
Yeah.
Yep.
Which is certainly a great thing to do after, we hopefully pass our budget.
So when is happening, the day after?
The first.
You know, you know, the kids, it's part of the budget year.
It doesn't change your, what people are voting on, but we still know. It's not actually ten, one, two percent, it's like twenty, seven percent. If it gets, if it gets, if we're not.
In the, yes, twenty-three to twenty-four graduating.
Oh, okay.
So, this year or next year, would you?
Actually both, ironically.
Oh, okay. Is it the same one?
Yeah.
That's good. So, so we'll have six, so overall, we'll have six more students in high school, so that's almost, it's like around a hundred thousand dollars, over a little over a hundred thousand dollars for, for the budget on the first year. So, yeah, yeah. So, just so we're all prepared.
Yeah.
Um.
People move in and out too.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, yeah. Um, do you have anything else, Brian?
No, I'm good.
Um, did you wanna, I, I just wanted to let, um, Sarah know about that you found, so you did find some Four Winds funding?
Yes, I have funding for Four Winds, so we had some anonymous grants or donations from before, so we'll be able to use that for next year, so hold it, definitely save and take and care of. And then we continue to look for grants for homework and see the other areas, just to be able to figure out how we can make sure those programs that are so important in our school.
Did you want to highlight in your presentation that maybe you've already cut, you want to watch it, you think that's important?
I took, I took that out, because we did have the one slide, I looked back from last year's presentation where we did do some more major cuts, I took that out, just so, right now that we.
Can you have that ready in case that's part of the questions that come up?
Yes, I can have that ready, I can have a little clip in there and say, oh, by the way, this is what we did cut.
Uh-huh. Um, what else, um, oh, as far as Four Winds goes now, something that's important to me like for going forward and keeping this as a sustainable thing that we can keep having, is trying to find another school to share the burden with us, at least one other school, if we could get more than that, like maybe we want to contact, I don't know, some other local elementary schools that might be interested in doing it.
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, women used to have it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I could email the, the woman from the Science Institute and ask her what other schools in our area, the problem is, I don't think that there's any super local schools that, but she's coming all the way from.
Yeah, well, even if they, if maybe we could, we could, you know, go to these other schools and present it, or, you know, do like, I know, like, my son's robotics club, like, they go like to certain days at the school and they can go and, you know, talk to the kids and see if they'd be interested in it, and I don't know if schools would want us doing that, but at least maybe we could present at their board meetings, maybe at what Four Winds is, and.
Good, I think it's important that they're, they're within driving distance, I mean, the trades happen monthly, so you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
That's only, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Yeah, but it's worth a look.
Like when Hartland was doing it, we were in collaboration, so like, that's why it came on discount, was because the educator would come just one day and she would teach both schools.
Yeah. Both schools, yeah.
So, it, yeah, it would have to be with fairly close by, yeah.
Yeah, so I just think that's something we can just kind of keep in mind and try to get worked out, you know, maybe this, you know, this spring.
I can, I mean, I could ask them and
Yeah.
who else in the area might be doing it, but they didn't really offer that when Hartland had dropped out, so. I mean, they didn't say like, oh, you have a, yeah, you have a town like three towns away that is doing it too, nobody really said that, so.
I mean, with Albert Bridge maybe, but they kind of have their own thing, right, they sort of have their own outdoor.
Do a lot of outdoor work out in the mountains, I could certainly ask, I'll ask Jennifer.
Okay. Or Windsor Elementary, or, um.
Actually, I talked to a fifth grade science teacher and she was interested.
Is she?
Yeah, so it would be the funding part of it that we don't, we don't know about, and if, you know, if they feel that's funded and work out what they find it to.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I, I feel it comes down to cost sharing.
Yeah. Well, if, if, I mean, if they wanted to like, because like, if they wanted to try it out for this coming year, if we already have funding for it, we could offer them to try it out for free, since we have the funding for it.
The problem unfortunately is not just funding, it's the volunteers.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Well, yeah, we'd have to come up with their volunteer workforce.
I mean, that, that sadly was Hartland's, um, issue, is that, you know, we were fifteen, seventeen volunteers strong and they had two.
Yeah.
And they were losing one, and it was the secretary that was basically it, and you can't teach K through five with one volunteer, so, I mean, that's where we, the program is strong, so that was my argument on it, and, and it's all run by volunteers, so we're already doing the work, so.
So the findings specifically for the educator, you can't.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but if, yeah, if we could offer the, like, if she thinks she can get enough volunteers together, yeah, they can come to the trainings here and try it out for next year for free, and then the following year, it would be a sharing thing.
What, what, what school was that at? Windsor, was that? Okay.
Okay, um, so, uh, let's go to setting the next agenda, which is, uh, as Brian already told us, March eleventh at six thirty. Um, the main thing to do at that meeting is reorganization.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, maybe a little budget debrief.
Yeah. We'll have some students give out about, um, camp re-lob as well. We've got Larry tonight on the six.
And a student presentation, um, anything else that anybody had in particular for March?
Should I ask Christine about an executive session for?
Uh, we are, we are having an executive session today, so, yeah, yeah, um.
We are, yeah.
Okay, um, if anybody thinks of anything else between now and like about a week before our next meeting, let me know. Get added to the agenda, um, but for now, that's probably good, I know reorganization takes up a bit of time, um. So, Christine did mention that we do have a need for executive session. Just a quick one, and what's the reasoning for?
Uh, it is under, uh, one VSA three thirteen F, which is attorney-client communication sharing.
Okay.
Communications, yeah.
Alright, I'll take a motion to go into executive session, if, uh, Becky?
Oh, I just wanted to know what, I couldn't understand what Christine said the executive session was for.
It is for, uh, one VSA three thirteen F, which is confidential attorney-client communications.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Becky. Um, so if nobody else has anything before we go to executive session, um, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Okay, Vincent made the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, so we will be entering executive session at eight twelve.